To go ahead and get started this evening for the regular city council meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
He's here.
I'll come back. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Do you have a quorum? Thank you. This evening, first off, we're going to go on to the invocation. Pastor Keisha Casey from Loving Grace Worship Center is here. And thank you for your patience this evening of waiting for us. We're so fortunate to have you here, especially for Women's History Month. So, thank you for being here. And you may proceed.
You're welcome. Hello, everybody. It's an honor for me to be here to pray over the city of Waukegan. Waukegan is a great city. It's a thriving city. It's a prosperous city here in the North Lake Shore area. And I thank you for allowing me to be here today. So, first, I want to acknowledge that it is Women's History Month. And there are some great women who have and are continuing to carve a path in history. Women of all colors, all creeds, all nationalities. So, I appreciate the women who have gone before me, the ones that are fighting with me, and those who will come after me. That women of my status and my caliber need to be training up so that they can know how to carve a path for themselves and how to fight. So, if you would pray with me. God, as we come before you today, we bless you for who you are, God. God, I pray for this local leadership of government, for the city of Waukegan. God, I pray that you give them wisdom to lead with honor and integrity, putting aside self and doing what is best for the people that they represent. God, let them consider you and your ways and all that is done. God, I pray against the violence in the city of Waukegan. God, let us rejoice together and aim for restoration, comfort one another, agree with one another, and begin to come to a place where we live in peace with one another. For God, we know that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against powers, principalities, rulers of the darkness of this world, and against spiritual wickedness in high places. So, Lord, let us recognize who the enemy is. The enemy is not one another, not pitting one against the other, God. But if we can find some common ground and come together, then we can reach some solutions, God, for the children. The children are important in this time and in this season, God. The children, the future leaders of Waukegan, the future leaders of America, God, the children are what's important. So, allow, God, the city council members to lay aside self and to move and to do what's important for the children. God, I pray for godly, fair laws. Let the council members consider the widows and the less fortunate and the orphans in the city. Let them consider the Waukegan School District and everything that is happening in the Waukegan School District. Let them have some compassion for those children and for those families who are less fortunate than they are. God, let everything in this meeting be done decently and in order. Because when there is order, God, you are in it. When there is disorder, God, you are not in it. So, I pray for order in this meeting. And I pray your blessings upon the city of Waukegan, every family, everybody that is represented here tonight. I pray a prophetic blessing over them. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Thank God, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to seat Alderman Hayes? Or is he... Yes. So, I need a first and a second.
I'll first.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So, it was Alderman Florian and Alderman Rivera to seat Alderman Hayes.
We need a voice vote?
All in favor?
Hold on. Did you get the names? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, everyone, to the city council meeting for March 20th. Already springtime. Doesn't feel like it, but we're getting there. Again, I want to remind people that our agendas come out on a Friday afternoon for our Monday council meetings. Please go on our website and look at what the agenda will be so you can follow along. And any questions that you have, you may bring to public comment. Like I said, the cold weather has kind of gone by us, and everybody's been looking forward to summer. And we know that because everybody's been calling City Hall asking about the Independence Day Parade. That is actually the Waukegan Park District's Independence Day Parade, and it will be July 2nd this year, so mark your calendars. And participation applications are available at waukegankparks.org/parade. This year's theme is the Star Spangled Celebration. And we look forward to this event, and I know many of the community does. So, please, if you want to participate, contact the Park District. At this time, I want to offer congratulations to our own 5th Ward Alderwoman Edith Newsom for being recognized as part of the Women's History Month as one of women who tell their stories at the Trinity AME Church last weekend. Alderwoman, we sincerely thank you for representing our city well and for a very long time. Thank you. Thank you so much. I want to also offer congratulations to Waukegan High School Senior Angel Servant for being awarded the Evans Scholarship. The Evans Scholars Foundation is a charitable trust that provides full, listen up, full four-year tuition and housing, college scholarships, to deserving golf caddies. Such an amazing accomplishment. And again, I want to say congratulations, but keep that in mind. I mean, that's a pretty big thing when you can get four years and your housing paid for off a scholarship for being a caddy. So, please, if you have a college-age student, look into that. For residents of Islamic faith, Ramadan begins on sundown this Wednesday, March 22nd. It's the month of fasting, prayer, reflection, and community. For those who celebrate, have a peaceful Ramadan. March is National Kidney Month. Approximately one in seven adults have chronic kidney disease. According to the CDC, African-Americans are nearly three times more likely to be diagnosed with kidney failure. Anyone 18 years or older with diabetes, high blood pressure, cardiovascular disease, or a family history of kidney disease should be screened for kidney disease. For more information, please go to the National Kidney Foundation website at kidney.org. Last week, you remember, the last city council meeting, the Waukegan Public Library was here talking about they will be hosting Light Up Blue. This autism awareness event will take place on Sunday, April 2nd. The event will include refreshments, drawings, and a student art show. All funds raised will go towards remodeling a children's meeting room in the library into a sensory-friendly chill zone for young people with autism and their families. For additional information about this event and other citywide events, see the city's calendar at waukeganil.gov. And as most of you know, the referendum for a manager council from a government is on the ballot on April 4th. And to ensure that the city keeps its nine alderpeople elected by ward this evening, we have an item on the agenda which would work to ensure that happens. That item is found under New Business and is called an ordinance approving the submission of a public question to retain the election of one alderperson per ward in the city of Waukegan if a managerial form of government is adopted. So, in the past, we had it as two resolutions. It's one. And this would take place on the March 19th, 2024, general primary election ballot. And the referendum question would read as follows. Shall the city of Waukegan continue to elect alderpersons from the wards with only one alderperson to be elected from each ward? I hope our alderperson's vote yes tonight to ensure that residents of Waukegan will always have nine wards and nine alderpeople, as I have promoted for as long as I've been up here. And being one of nine aldermen, I'm so proud of the job that the alderpeople do. So, again, you'll see that up tonight. Also tonight, I want to welcome Chief Paser from our fire department and Chief Navarro to talk about, one will be talking about crime, one will be with, Beth Moss will be talking for the fire department. And what we're going to be talking about tonight through the fire department is the rise in fentanyl overdoses. And we will talk about Narcan. And do you guys have a preference? Who goes first? Okay, Chief Navarro.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Chief.
I'm going to talk a little bit about some stats that we have, our stats from 2022, from January through March, in comparison to the stats that we have for 2023. We currently, this year, do not have, and these stats are also stats that we report to not only the state, but also the federal government. We have not had any homicides this year. We've had two rapes, same as we did last year. Our robberies have increased this month by one. In January, we had 14 in comparison to four in 2022. Our aggravated assaults are down this month. Last year, at the same time, we had 10. We currently have seven. Our burglaries have increased by two. We currently have seven. This time last year, we had five. Last year, our thefts were at 111 during this same time period, where during this same time period this year, we have 33. Our stolen motor vehicle thefts, we're at four. Last year, we had five. And those thefts are, most of our stolen motor vehicle thefts are related to people warming up their vehicles and leaving their cars unattended. We've had one arson this year. I wanted to touch on, those are just some of the stats. Those are the stats that we report, not every crime that happens within the city of Waukegan. But I want to bring up our co-responder grant that we just received, which is going to help us combat crime. It is, it is a grant that just went into effect. We've been signed off on it by the state. And what this grant gives us is specially trained, certified, mental health crisis workers. So, we're going to have a crisis worker respond to a call with us, with the patrol officers. And what we want to do with our crisis workers is, one, find the root causes of these issues, because many of these calls are constant. So, when there's a crisis, and what I mean about a crisis, not just a mental health crisis, we're talking about homelessness, drug addiction, domestic violence. And we were, what we want to do is have our mental health crisis work employee and our officer that will also be specially trained to work with that certified mental health crisis worker, spend more time with our residents. So, when we do have a call, many of these calls are very time-consuming so that now we can have our officers respond to other calls in the city that require their attention as well. And our co-responders then can take the time, again, to find out what these root causes are. What's, what's, our intention is to increase the connection to services that are currently being offered. So, we are not offering the services, but we're going to be a connection to those services. It's also a way for us to divert people from the criminal justice system and reduce arrests. Many times, when we have to make an arrest because we have no other options with the situation that we have, we can't take them to the hospital. And many times, unfortunately, the court system is not always able to offer them any type of service. So, with this type of unit, our intent is to be able to provide these services or to help our community members with the opportunities to have these services provided to them. And what our officers are going to do is take the time to speak with them, the families, whether they're juveniles, whether they're adults. And if we need to take them to these services, many times, the fire department will get called because this is the last resort. They don't have any type of healthcare. They don't have any other options, and they're not aware of them. The fire department gets called, and their paramedics now have to pick them up and give them a ride to the hospital because they have no other way of getting healthcare. What we want to do is intervene, is be able to provide those services, not provide the services, but provide a means to those services so that it doesn't have such an impact on our city services. So, again, you know, we're talking about not only someone that's in crisis, someone that's trying to commit suicide, but we have a homelessness problem, we have a drug addiction problem, we have many repeat domestic violence situations where we can actually create a greater impact and reduction so that our officers can spend more time with, especially with the violent crime that we're having. So, that's all I have for now, unless someone has a question for me. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Chief Paser, Beth Moss will be coming up. And... Ray, Ray had a question?
Yeah. Did somebody have a question?
I went to a no harm reduction meeting last week, and I was not understanding why the Waukegan Police Department is not a part of that, if they have that in common practice. But a no harm reduction, you know, you have all these components. I think that should be something that you guys should look at and learn from.
Absolutely. And that's the thing where this unit will be able to, the intent is so that they become familiar and aware with all the services that are around us so that we can properly help all our citizens, depending on what issue's going on at the time. But absolutely, Ray. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I think it's a good thing that we're looking at bringing up the police office with the mental health thing, as well as mental health crisis. I see there's something you're extending here that you're doing in Chicago. I think it would also be a good idea, you can tell me your thoughts on it because I mentioned it here before, extending to the North Shore, because it is the county seat, like Chicago is the county seat there, to find out what your thoughts is on an independent, independent civilian office of police accountability. I know you have the Civil Service Commission, but I think it's a good idea, and I think it is long overdue to have an independent civilian police accountability.
I don't have, so, I'm up to conversation on it. I'm not going to talk about it now. I'm up to having a seat down, seat with you, or have a seat with anyone else that'd like to discuss it. If you want to give me a call, and I'd love to sit down with you and have that discussion. And I would love to bring up some points on it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Chief Paser, do you want to start?
Please, thank you. And we also have Dr. Mary with us as well, who's going to say a few words at the end. So, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and council members for allowing us to speak for a minute about a nationwide crisis which is hitting close to home at an alarming rate. I'm talking about opioid addiction and abuse. According to the CDC, in 2021, 107,000 people in the United States died of drug overdoses. And about two-thirds of those deaths involve synthetic opioids, primarily being fentanyl. Fentanyl is 50 times more potent than heroin, 50 times more. This equates, with those numbers, this equates to 190 people per day that are dying of opioid-related overdoses. Staggering numbers. The metrics, like I said, are staggering, and they demand that all Americans work together to reduce the harsh impact opioid addiction and abuse has on the lives of so many of our neighbors, our family members, and our friends. Too many lives have been lost to drug poisoning and overdose. Too many families and communities have been shattered by this crisis. At the Waukegan Fire Department, our efforts also include working collaboratively with responsible interest firms who share our concerns and our commitment to public health. We thought that if we could bring up exposure on the potential fatal outcomes, we'd reduce the rates of new addiction. And Mayor, being that March is Women's History Month, I would now like to introduce Battalion Chief of EMS Beth Moss, who is the first female to hold the rank of battalion chief in the history of the Waukegan Fire Department.
Thank you, all. I would like to start this evening by saying thank you for giving me a few moments of your time. My purpose for tonight is to bring heightened awareness to a risk in our community. Many residents in our community and through Lake, excuse me, throughout Lake County struggle with substance use disorder or use drugs recreationally. A big risk with purchasing illegal street drugs is you really have no idea what you're getting. Many street drugs are mixed with fentanyl, whether you intend to purchase narcotics or not. In 2022, the Lake County Coroner's Office reported 131 deaths due to drug overdoses. Of those 131 deaths, 124 of them were accidental, and 92 of those deaths involved fentanyl. Another substance that is being mixed into drugs in Lake County is called xylene, also known as trank. This is a large animal tranquilizer that has no safe amount for use in humans. Xylene has been found mixed with cocaine, heroin, PCP, and many other street drugs. This past January, the Waukegan Fire Department administered 19 doses of Narcan, with that number increasing to 36 in February. Narcan is a medicine used to treat a known or suspected opiate overdose with signs of respiratory problems in severe sleepiness or not being able to respond. Narcan nasal spray is available for free to Lake County community members through the Lake County Health Department. Narcan can be picked up from the Lake County Health Department at the 3,000, excuse me, 3004 Grand Avenue address and the 2,400 Belvidere Road address. They're available Monday through Friday between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. If you or someone you care for uses opioids or other recreational drugs that could be contaminated with fentanyl, you should carry Narcan and know how to use it. Again, the Lake County Coroner's Office reported 92 overdose deaths in Lake County involving fentanyl. Whether you think you are purchasing cocaine versus heroin, you truly have no idea what you are getting and putting into your body. Narcan can reverse the effects of an opiate overdose when used in time. It is easy to get, it is easy to use, and it may save a life. Please take advantage of the life-saving programs available to you in Lake County. Thank you again for your time, and I'm going to pass the mic over to Dr. Mary for some more information of programs available in our community.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to talk a little bit more about the services that we offer right here in downtown Waukegan for opiate overdose and other mental health issues. As it was already communicated, Narcan does save lives. And a lot of times, people think that it's only for street drugs like heroin, but Narcan is also used for pain medication that's opiate-based. Some people are prescribed opiate-based pain medicine for bona fide medical conditions, and if that medication is mixed with other medications, that could lead to an overdose. And an overdose doesn't always be fatal. It could be non-fatal. And what I mean by that, fatal meaning you die, non-fatal meaning that you're just experiencing the shortness of breath, a skin turning blue, and things of that sort. The Northern Illinois Recovery Community Organization that's located right on the corner of Genesee and Lake Street, we also provide the Narcan training. You could drop in any day, Monday through Friday, to get the training that you need, and we will give you two kits to take with you. There's no reason that our community shouldn't have this Narcan either in their purse, in their car, or in their household, so that people could be prevented from overdosing. This is not just a street drug crisis. This is a pain medication crisis, and Narcan is a lifesaver, and we're here to do that. Again, I'm Dr. Mary Robertson. I'm the CEO and founder of the Northern Illinois Recovery Community Organization right here in downtown Waukegan. Please stop in and see us and save a life. And lastly, we have a program called Block by Block, where we're going block by block in 606-85 and 87, and 606-99 and 64, and educating the community about the use of Narcan. Some of our community members don't want to come to the Health Department. Some of our community members don't want to come to NERCO. We'll go to them, knock on the door, train them on Narcan, give them a couple of kits so that lives could be saved. Thank you for this opportunity.
I want to just say that for those of you who don't know that sometimes with fentanyl, it takes more than one Narcan dose to make a difference. And we are seeing a big rise in that. And I want to thank everybody here for listening to this tonight. This is important in our community that we understand and we save our community members that can't necessarily make the decision to save themselves. So, it's our obligation. With that, that concludes my mayor's comments. We will go on to, there's being no proclamations or anything tonight. We'll go on to audience time. Thank you. I'm going to, we have a number of people to talk tonight. I'm going to call up the first five. Go ahead and proceed to the east side of the room. Take your turn when the next person's done. The first five, Kenneth Endress, Teresa Placencia, Representative Rita Mayfield, Mr. Joseph Hughes, and Mr. Gary Reinhardt. That's Kenneth Endress, Teresa Placencia, Representative Rita Mayfield, Joseph Hughes, and Gary Reinhardt. And Mr. Kenneth, as soon as you're ready, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Kenneth Endress. I am a representative from Naval Station Great Lakes, bringing greetings from Captain Jason Williamson, the commanding officer of Naval Station. I'm here to extend my greetings as a well wish, best wishes from Great Lakes and to the community in which naval and other military service members live. So, we are interested in your community, as I hopefully you are interested in the well-being of Naval Station Great Lakes. I'd like to indicate and offer some thanks for the city. Both North Chicago and Waukegan reached out to us in support of two projects that are happening. One is the Lewis Avenue Project from down on Buckley Road all the way up to Belvidere. And then the other project is the Sheridan Corridor Project, in which Captain Williamson was able to provide endorsement support letters for, for your efforts to make those roadway better in your communities. But I also wanted to indicate that the Department of Defense has other programs which your community could profit by. And one is the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, as well as the Coastal Resilience Program. These are federal dollars which are sometimes matched with state and local dollars and sometimes in services and kind. So, I know that I have extended some of this information to the communities around us, but if you're ever thinking of those terms of how to improve services in your communities, and you think there's a possibility that there's a military connection, please consider that as an opportunity. One of the programs that's highlighted is a Sentinel Landscape. And over the last 10 years, $1.2 billion have been spent and allocated toward those programs. A lot of it comes from the Department of Agriculture, state funds, the Department of Interior, and then the Department of Defense. And the amount of money that the local or private industry has provided from that was about 20% total. So, the other federal agencies are really kicking in a lot of funds. And with that, I'd like to say that I am ending my 52 years with the Navy at the end of the month.
No.
And with that, I bring my replacement, Michael Quinn.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, and congratulations. We look forward to having you next month or next week, next time. Ms. Teresa Placencia, please.
Waukegan Mayor, thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm the superintendent of District 60. Tonight, you're going to be asked to vote around the wraparound center that will be located centrally here in downtown Waukegan. I want to start off with a quote. It's a... It says, "Progress is impossible without change, and those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything." As leaders, we have a responsibility to our community. We know that our most precious commodity is our children. It is the greatest resource that any nation has, that any community has, but most of all the city of Waukegan. After the pandemic, our city was hit the hardest. Our schools were on break for over a year. Kids were not able to mingle with one another, they were not able to receive services, some of them went hungry, some of them lost their parents, some of them lost their grandparents, and all that tragedy compounded by the fact of the high poverty rate that we serve here in Waukegan shows that these kids have a right and need special services to equalize the playing field. We know that education is a systematic oppression barrier for many of our children. It has been for us. At one time, women couldn't even go to school. It is in our power, it is our right to change the system, and as leaders, we have to make decisions based off what is right and not what is popular, what is not our agenda, but what is right for the overall good of our community. And I implore you today, as you make this vote, think of the children that live within your wards. I understand, we're talking about parking, we're talking about people walking blocks, we're talking about, well, maybe we should have picked another location.
That's right.
Those are all very good variables and very important ones, but they should not be the reason why you vote no today on a wraparound center that this community needs, that my son needs. Your advocates out here, your activists every day see that our community is struggling to survive, they're asking for help. We are doing all in our power to try to help. Education has changed, so I'm going to ask you, if not you, then who? And if not now, then when? Because I do not want to sacrifice the youth of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Representative Mayfield.[751.82][751.82](APPLAUSE).
All right, that's a hard one to follow, but I'm going to piggyback off of what Dr. Placencia was talking about, because it is about our children, it is about what can we do to make things better. Myself, Senator Johnson, we fight very hard to bring dollars back to this community, and I want you to know, there are 118 representatives in the House, 118. I am fighting with 118 other individuals for precious resources. We were able to bring $4 million back for this wraparound center. That's how strongly we feel about what we're doing. Our children suffered during COVID. We're talking about children who had experienced adverse childhood trauma. That trauma is still coming out. They were locked up with their abusers, they were isolated, they were hungry. You know, our children went through a lot. A lot of them unfortunately tried to commit suicide, and that is probably one of the biggest things. We know that mental health is here in our community, we know that our children need issues. I'm hearing about parking, I'm hearing about, we don't want drug addicts to come downtown, we don't want another pantry downtown, we don't want these people. Who are these people? This is our community, these are our children, these are the residents, these are their parents, they live here, they deserve these services, they deserve to know if my child is experiencing trauma, that I can go here and get the services that I need. Am I asking you to hand out a breadbasket to them? No, we've got four soup kitchens in Waukegan already, but they need to know where they are. Can they call someone? They can, but they don't always know what services are right around the corner here in Waukegan. You can just, you can ask people in this room, they don't know what services are available downtown Waukegan right now. We have social service downtown Waukegan, believe it or not. To say that you don't want anymore, that you don't want foot traffic, that you don't want professional people in a professional building who are administering professional services to our children is just wrong. When we talk about the educational component, you have a child sitting in a room that's hungry, they can't concentrate on a book in front of them. You have a child that's worried about going home and being abused, and yes, our children are being abused at home, but they can't, who do they reach out to? Who can they go to? You're wanting to cut all of these services and say, we don't want it here, put it somewhere else. Well, I can guarantee you, if we took that $4 million and I went to Zion, if I went to Gurnee, Gurnee would snap up that $4 million in a heartbeat and say, yes, put it right here, we will give you a space for it. I'm saying, let's put it here in Waukegan. I'm tired of coming downtown and not seeing progress. I hear about it, but I'm not seeing it. This is an opportunity to bring people, to bring progress, to bring foot traffic, which brings more businesses to downtown Waukegan, and at the same time, providing a critical, critical service to our children. Do not hold off on the vote, I'm asking that you don't hold it over, that we go ahead and we vote this out tonight. That is that important, it's critical to our children.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Joseph Hughes.[944.35][944.35](MUSIC PLAYING).
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, Joseph Hughes, born and raised in Waukegan. I'm here to voice opposition to the location for the proposed wraparound center at 214 Washington Street. I've been a downtown property owner since 1986, and 1986, there were still factories on the lakefront, two jewelry stores, several men's clothing stores, four banks, and a hardware store. Shortly thereafter, factories closed along with the aforementioned retail stores. The area had become downtrodden. The area really started, the area really started to turn around when Kent Moon renovated the old Public Aid Office into what is today the Family Piano Greentown, Rita Mayfield's office, along with many other businesses. Cool Food Pantry moved out, and now the south end of downtown is much better than it had been in 40 years. I believe that, that we will all see Parking Lot F become something, the big lot that we've spoke about earlier, in our downtown area, which is in close proximity to the proposed wraparound center. I would say, I'm guilty of saying this is not in my backyard scenario, yes. However, I think it is much more than that. We do not think that this is a good fit for the Central Business District. We are all for mental health services and hope that a better location for this use can be identified, as Waukegan Schools does have a lot of facilities already. In addition to the above, parking is a real issue with this proposal. I have brought use proposals to the city in the past and was informed of parking requirements. So this is, this is nothing new, it's standard operating procedures for any business coming in. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gary Reinhardt.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to repeat myself a little bit from my earlier conversation here with you guys. First off, I want to say, I've been a landlord in downtown Waukegan for over 30 years, I've had three businesses in downtown Waukegan, again, everything is south of Washington Street. And have I seen issues with mental illness? Absolutely. Is mental illness being dealt with properly? Not at all. You know, I've rented to many of them, and you know, you feel for them. Nobody wishes that on their worst enemy, but it is what it is, and I don't believe that the treatment should be down in our business district. I think this proposal for this wraparound center is very foggy. It's like, I'm still looking for what's positive here for the business people struggling in downtown on Genesee Street, in the surrounding area. We have a parking issue, it's obvious, again, talk to the business owners, and their employees, they'll tell you, they'll give you, they'll give you an earful. The thing I keep on hearing tonight is also this, this claim of that the 214 Washington Street is centrally located, and honestly, you're a block away from the bluff of Lake Michigan, so unless we're bringing in salmon into this program, this is not a centrally located location, by any means. It feels to me like the school district put the cart before the horse, and now they're trying to figure out what the heck they're going to do with this property they bought. When you speak directly to representatives from the Peoria Wraparound Center, they claim that because they are receiving state funds, that anyone within the state is available for their help. Now, I'm not hearing that from the Waukegan School District, but I'm under the understanding that if you're accepting state funds, anyone within the state is available. Well, I don't know, I'm just telling you what Peoria said, I don't know. It just, well, I don't know, that's what Peoria said, and again, I'm not going to argue, but I just don't think it's a good fit whatsoever for downtown Waukegan. Again, you know, we used to be, I haven't heard this referred to, I did before, about the one-stop shop, well, we, again, we were the one-stop shop in Waukegan years ago for everyone in the county to come down here, spend their money, shop. Now, we're going to become, again, the one-stop shop for free services, which I don't think is going to draw anyone to spend money down here. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to call the next five, that's Mark Hahn, Brother Blanks, Clyde McLemore, Judith Marquez, and Carlos Smith. Mark Hahn, Brother Blanks, Clyde McLemore, Judith Marquez, and Carlos Smith, and as soon as I get this going... Go ahead, Mark Hahn.
Hello, my name's Mark Hahn. I've been working in the downtown area for over 40 years, property owner, and have watched various attempts at trying to make our downtown better. I have to commend Rita for working so hard to bring this opportunity to our town, and I'm under the same feeling that when we called Peoria, who is supposed to be the model of what you're replicating, they said that all you have to be is a member of the community, and they didn't put the boundaries on their town. So that's, that's up in the air, and the grant was written for 214 Washington, it could be changed, and then they could find another place. I'll say this, I was on the school board a dozen years ago, we had a attendance of student population of 16,000 to 17,000 students, it went up and down a little bit. Now I hear, talking to some of the school representatives today, I've heard 14,500 students now attend District 60, I've heard down to 13,000. Anywhere in there gives you about a 2,000-student difference. And after I left the board, the District 60, and I was for this, went on a expansion of 10 of their K through 5 schools, expanding the capacity. And I say to myself, okay, why don't you get a school? You're down 2,000 students, why don't you take it down a notch and provide one of these schools that would be centrally located to our, our town? And make that the wraparound center. Again, we all want the services for our students to get better, nobody doesn't want that. And all the assessing about what we need, we don't know what we need, we live here. I mean, what do you got to study? Look at our schools, they're having a hard time. If you go into the analysis of our schools, 23% are at grade level in their reading, in their writing, and math, and that's K through 5, some of those schools are in that, that's a terrible number. I recommend that we take an idea that Rita has proposed in front of the House and say, hey, if you don't graduate, if you can't read at grade level, at third grade, maybe you shouldn't go to fourth. Other states do it, it's a common sense thing. Unfortunately, she was met with a lot of resistance, but what's to stop District 60 from making a jump in the right direction and demanding good performances? This location down here, I talked to the business owners, 100% against it, 96% signed the petition that I sent.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn, thank you. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up, one of the issues I raised earlier, but first and foremost, I do want to, in further discourse, talk more about the misuse of the red light cameras in this city of Waukegan, I think it's disproportionately enforced in many of the areas, the red light cameras. So I'll talk about that further, and I also spoke early about the independent police, the independent police accountability, civilians' officer police accountability. So I'll talk more about that. But the reason I'm here tonight, I wanted to take this time in closing in this Women's History Month, and to pay some recognition and appreciation to two women of this city in particular, and those two women are older woman Sylvia Sims Bolton, and also special recognition to our mayor, Ann Taylor. Why? Because Black Abolition Movement for the Mind believes in extending appreciation and recognition to those who withstand appreciation and support for us. We have been coming to this city council since 2003. Prior to this administration, it was all men. We have brought our children down here to perform, we have extended gift to our, one of our mayors, our last mayor, but it was under this administration for the first time out of the years that we've been coming down here addressing the issues, that the women, our first ward alderman, saw, saw recognition to give us, to extend us a Waukegan Proud Award, and our mayor, Ann Taylor, recognized my wife, Josephine, and also extended a proclamation for poetry. So those are things that we appreciate, I know some people have some issues with an overabundance of, you know, too many recognizing awards, I think Mr., one of our comrades, Mr. Edwards made mention of that, and I, and you know what, and one thing I agree with you on is what also you did say, we do need to, we cannot do enough to recognize our children with those awards, but I thank you because before you guys, out of all the men that was here, and they are organization as a community that put in the work, who never come down here to ask this city for a dime. We have grassroots organizations putting in the work, doing the work with our community, doing the work for our children, and we are that organization. And for some of us, the only thing that we need is at least to be recognized, whether we get a dime or a dollar or not, all we ask from this city for our unit, for our community is justice, and sometimes we have to demand it, and when we demand it, we get it. But I just wanted to take this time and extend my appreciation to you, and in the last five seconds, to our, our, our state rep and our senator for the work and the resources you're bringing here.
Thank you.
And for all women in this month, we recognize you because if it weren't for you women, the fact of it is, wouldn't none of us men be here? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Clyde McLemore, Zegative Director for Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter celebrate Women's History Month, we're doing a Women's Worth Women Brunch this Saturday at Falls Park, we got some marvelous speakers coming out, Ms. Kenya Collins from Chicago, and our youngest state rep ever, she's Generation X, Nabea Said will be here to speak at, at our Women's Brunch, and there'll be three women honored from the three, from the tri-cities. One is the Waukegan, from Waukegan, is a teacher, my teacher, Cynthia Harris, from Ploy Connection, working with the youth and helping them get jobs, she will be recognized. Also, Zion Township Supervisor Sherri Neal, and from North Chicago, Satriss Southworth for the Christmas program that she does. But I attended the Waukegan Forward Meeting, which really is Waukegan backwards. There was a question to me, do I live in Waukegan? Actually, I do live in Waukegan. I am at my office 24 hours a day, and when I go to Zion, it's just to sleep. But mayor, where do you shop at? When have you been to a balloon release? You take your money back to Libertyville. Your tax dollars not go to our schools, you think you're better than the citizens of this beautiful city. Only we can see you are only at a political function. So when I made the statement, do you live in Waukegan, I wasn't wrong. Living somewhere is being a part of the community, you're not part of this community. However, have you ever bought gas in Waukegan? Ann Taylor, you do not own Oak Plain Road. If you remove any of my signs, I will have you arrested. I paid for them signs, then I put them up there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Judith Marquez.
Good evening, mayor and city council.
Good evening, mayor and city council, and the Lake County citizens. My name is Judith Marquez. I am a business owner by the name of Wild West Grill, located on fourteen twelve Washington Street and Butrick. The purpose, why I'm here is just to say a huge thank you to the Waukegan Police Department. And the reason is because they do conduct business checks for small business like myself. It makes me feel safe. It makes my staff feel safe, and also, and most importantly, my customers. However, with that being said, I would rather have the business check to be conducted at twelve thirty AM through one or even one thirty AM. I feel like Washington Street has become a little bit, bit busy than before. So, if it's within that time, that would really, really help and make us and our customers and everyone feel safe. Lastly, I will, to those that have not visited Wild West Grill, feel free to do so. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judith. Mr. Carlos Smith.
Hi, my name's Carlos Smith. I live two twenty-three Washington Street here downtown, and also own a crazy place here downtown on Genesee Street. I'm kind of conflicted on what's being discussed with the wraparound center and, and other things along with the referendum. I think that, my background is in marketing. That's where I'm able to, you know, attract the consumer through marketing, whatever I need to market for them to buy. To make it quick and, quick and dirty, as they say, I think that we need to do better in marketing. I think the city of Waukegan really needs to have a department focused in this area, and also District Sixty. Because what I'm hearing is two different sides saying that the best interest is here, and then the best interest is here. But in marketing, we deal in majority. You know the facts in who wants what, and what area needs it, and then what area doesn't need it. And I think that we're just speculating a lot on the majority. And of course, the services are needed for the wraparound center, of course. But, but my business being here too, someone would say, hey, Los, has anyone said to you, ayo, what do you think about the wraparound center? This is how you get a consensus for the people that own property or own businesses downtown. And then, then you move forward and say, okay, cool. I think we got a good enough consensus to go forward, or have another study to see if we can move forward. And I think that this area is, is lacking in all phases in everything that's happening. Because you can't have such a large group of people saying one thing, and then three people, you're basing that as the majority. That's not how it goes. You need to have a, a person maybe working for the district, a person working for the city, that is worried and focused on consensus. And with that consensus, you have hard-clad consumer numbers. So, you make a decision on that. And politicians know how this goes as well. You go where your voter is. That's what you need to focus on with these issues. Because as loud as some of us are here, and then some of us, some of us are here, the consumers, like, I don't know what the heck you're talking about. Because when I talk about a referendum, even on my show, they're like, Carlos, I don't even know what you're talking about. District Sixty, Wraparound Center, what is that? So, that's the problem that we have, in that, in this room, we think that we're speaking for a group of people, for whatever, left or right. And that's just really not the case. We need to really focus on hard target marketing right now to get the consensus to know if they want it or not. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir. The last group of people will be Mark Shinton, Randy Sobeki, Margaret Carrasco, Steve Ludwig, Rayon Edwards, and Nick Alajakis. That's Mark Shinton, Randy Sobeki, Margaret Carrasco, Steve Ludwig, Rayon Edwards, and Nick Alajakis. Go ahead, as soon as I get this.
Mark Shinkin, eighteen twelve Linden. I've been a resident for a little over thirty years here. And I guess the easiest way to explain my feelings now for this city is I've become numb. So, I call Keith when I have issues, and, you know, he's just one person. But the problems that I will call him and he will address are the same problems that we have pretty much all over the whole city. I'll use his ward. There's, there's a church that's been vacant on Greenwood. I want to say probably for the last four years. There's a part of the sidewalk that you can't even walk on. So, if you do want to walk around the neighborhood, you have to actually physically go out on in the street. Why is it blocked off? Well, part of the wall fell down. They rebuilt it a little bit. The roof was in disrepair, and it still is. I mean, there were, I, I'd personally seen many raccoons. But it's an abandoned building. They're not having church there anymore. But we just kind of let it sit. You know, there's, we've got that all over, and it's like, I, I almost like, don't even want to notice things when I drive around. Oh, how long is this building going to sit vacant for? It's, it's, it's sad. You know, I've lived here, you know, more than half of my life. I'd like to, you know, continue living here. But, you know, it's, it's getting to the point where it's not a sustainable place to want to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Sobeki.
Good evening, everyone. So, I want to talk about the Wraparound Center project. I want to thank Rita Mayfield and Senator Johnson for getting the funds for it. And I'm all for a wraparound center in our city, but I just don't think two fourteen Washington Street is the right place for it. One, it is not centrally located. Centrally located would be out by McCary and Washington, so the whole community can get to it. Not everyone can get to downtown Waukegan. And my other thing is, it is about the children. It's a hundred percent about the children. And I'm one of those single parents that the superintendent said earlier. My kids, we outsource a lot of our counselors, and that it is now. My son's on his third counselor, because dealing with the divorce in the family and that, he's on his third counselor. They have left and went to some, another job. So, now, my son has to start all over with a new counselor. So, how is that fair to him? These services are supposed to be provided in our schools, and these kids are not getting these services in our schools. If it happened to my kid, so every person that counselor was seeing, it happened to their kid. And it keeps going down the line. That's what we need to stop. I agree. I wanted here in Waukegan a hundred percent. I just don't think this is the right spot. When we purchased that building, it was for administration building. And there was a lot of backlash from the community about purchasing that building, using student funds to purchase that building. And if we went to the drawing board as a district, the night it was brought up to the community was the night they voted on to purchase that building. They never got any input from the community about purchasing that building. And Mr. Ewen was not for that building in the beginning. And then it was, what could we do and put in that building so we can get the administration building? Seventy percent of that building is going to be administration. So, let's not try to confuse everybody. That's the whole purpose of putting the wraparound center in there is to get the administration building. I am all for a wraparound center in our, in our city. We do need it. But I don't think that's the location. We have a lot of empty buildings in our community. We talked about kids being abused at home. Kids are being abused in our buildings, in this district. And that needs to be addressed. JROTC should just put on a wonderful event, the Saturday. And we made a couple phone calls. We have ninety percent of the top administration in this building. There was two administrators for that supporting our kids at that event. And that was the first annual event for Cunningham. So, where's our support? If it's about the children, let's make it about the children. Let's not pick and choose when it's about the children. Let's always make it for the children. I should have seen every one of these faces that are here tonight, when we made a couple phone calls, should have been at that building supporting those children. We have one of the biggest JROTC programs in the state, and they should have been there supporting those children.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Tonight, my words are directed to the City Waukegan Agenda Item Letter X, about the city manager. However, first, I'm here on behalf of the number one Mexican restaurant, La Canoa, and the Latino community to present a check in the amount of seven hundred dollars, so chief, I'll have that, for the Waukegan Police and Fire Memorial Fund. Next, folks, we're only two weeks away. We're going to decide about this with the city manager. Okay? And there's pros and cons on both sides of the issues, okay? However, I give both sides, and also about the wraparound center, a big fat F, supporting what Carlos said. As far as getting the information out to the community, nothing. So many residents don't even know what the heck you're talking about. Okay? You know, there's criticism about at-large elections, hindering the minority vote. There's arguments about the salary. There's arguments about, you know, that it's going to clean up the corruption. Folks, I wanted to take a second to refresh your memory on just one of the items. Okay? So, one of the arguments is that, you know, we got a mayor, do your job. Why do you need another person? Okay? Well, hey, Mayor Durkin, he had Weakly as his assistant at about a hundred thousand dollars. Then we had Mayor Hyde, Mayor Drew, Mayor Sabanjan, and they had Mr. Vukovich as their city manager director, okay, making a hundred grand. And then we had Sam Cunningham. He had three assistants, Tom, Marcus, and Susanna, and we're talking about approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Then we have our mayor, Ann Taylor, and she has Bridges, okay, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay? So, does he make more? Oh, okay. So, the point is that every other mayor has had, there's been different, it's been called different names, but essentially doing the same thing. Okay? So, but what, what an issue that is not being brought up, and I think is the most important one, this is Maria. Okay? She is a Latina in our community. And there was an opening here for the city, and I had her apply. We were told that there was a nationwide search, and residents were told that everyone's interviewed. So, I just recently spoke to Maria. Maria said she never received an email telling her about an interview. She was never text. She was never caught for the interview. Therefore, my concern is that we have the search, but all the people who are applying are not being interviewed. I have a problem with that. Okay? How many more is there? And just going back to some of the other topics spoken tonight, Cynthia?
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
Is number one Ploy Connections. Thank you.
Steven Ludwig, please. Thank you. Steven Ludwig?
Due to the lateness of the hour, I'll try to be very quick. I do live in Waukegan. I've been here for forty-some-odd years, and I support the city manager. You can come by my house and see all kinds of city manager signs out there. And because I've been retired for about fifteen years, my house has been my full-time job. So, you will find me there practically twenty-four, seven. So, just, just something there. I wasn't going to speak this evening, but, but during an earlier meeting, I heard something that was said about the, the lead pipes, the fact that it's going to cost over five million dollars to, to have it remediated, so we can be in compliance with the state of Illinois and probably the federal government. And I guess, five million dollars is a lot of money, and I'm, I'm thinking that's going to be in the budgets that, that's going to be voted on a little bit later in, in the meeting here, because that's a twenty, twenty-two or twenty-three expense. And one of the comments that was made was, at least this won't be a cost to any citizens. Well, wait a minute. If it's in a budget, that's going to be a cost to the citizens. So, come on. It's a cost to the citizens. But the thing that bothers me the most is the fact that we knew that the lead was going to be a problem, and the city knew it was going to be a problem going back to two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. So, why wasn't it addressed then, when there was all kinds of money that with the state of Illinois and probably the federal government were throwing out in grants, that we wouldn't have had have been stuck with this five million dollar bill for the city of Waukegan? Mayor, I feel sorry for you. It's not your bill. It was probably at a previous administration that should have looked at it and addressed it and taken care of it for the citizens of Waukegan. But they didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rayon Edwards, please.
Man, sometimes three minutes don't be enough. I, I commend tonight District Sixty being in the building. Representative Mayfield, I love you to death. You know that. And sometimes it pains me when I'm on the opposite side with you. I appreciate all of the work you and Senator Johnson done. But tonight, I want this to be a lesson for District Sixty about the incompetence and the lack of. I see all of y'all in this building tonight. This year, I went to every basketball game, and I didn't see not even two administrators in there. That's a problem. And y'all come up here to the city council, and y'all gave all the dramatics and all of the speeches about everything that our kids need. But do our kids really need it, though, is what I'm asking y'all. Because I've been knowing they need it. So many districts around us was going to school during COVID, but not our kids. So many districts had so many things, but not our kids. How long have you city council waited for the superintendent to show up? Do y'all remember? Because I remember, because I've been here. How many times did y'all summons her to show up? But y'all were not important enough for her to be here to talk. She sent her cronies. Is that's what, that's what I'm going to call them, respectfully. So, I appreciate you, Ms. Tate and Ms. Dotson, for coming today to give us some clarity on what's really going on. Which, Ms. Tate, you should have been here from day one. You wrote the grant. Who better knows about the program than you? The rest of y'all, y'all failed. Y'all came up here, y'all stumbled on y'all words. Y'all had this entire community confused. I have about nine clippings from board meetings where y'all sent us left, right, back, forth. So, I also want to say to you business owner, we have a new business downtown, Mr. Carlos Smith. And the business owner have a committee, and I'm wanting to know, why ain't no color on that committee? Because he ain't been invited. He's the business. And I need to assure y'all, y'all don't run this city. Just because y'all say we don't want something, don't mean that's what it's going to be. So, again, if we all get out and educate the people in this community, that young man told y'all about marketing. I always talk about educating. Educating. That means getting out, knocking on doors, talking to people, asking them how they feel and what they think. Not after you make the decision, but before you start talking about making the decision. That's how it's supposed to go. Ms. Bowden, you hear me? Because I want you to be focused, because you never seems to be there. First Ward Alderman. So, again, let's think about these things, okay? Please. I would like us to come back to the table and sit down and talk about this like some adults, and reassess this situation. But we got an election coming up April the fourth, and things can be different April the fifth. And if those things are different, we need to look at the people that's going to be there then, who's going to be in those seats for the next four years.
I believe you're down.
Those are the ones that needs to make the decision.
Mr. Rayon.
So, again, Happy Women Month to all of you women. And, and I know my time up, but y'all messed up.
You know, I did mess it up.
If I said something on this microphone.
You're down. You're down.
I think I might have misspoke. George Bridges Jr.
I believe you're down.
He donated to me.
Thank you.
Out of his personal fund. He never did it for Sam.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Alajakis, thank you. Yeah, I did mess that up there, Mr. Rayon. But you were on your way. You were on your way. We'll be ready.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I appreciate you guys adding me at last second. I wanted to read this evening a letter of support that was emailed to all council members earlier. It's a letter that's been signed by several members of the community. And it reads, Dear Waukegan City Council Members, I'm writing to express my support of the Waukegan Public Schools Plan Public Schools Plan to open and operate a wraparound center at its new administrative offices in downtown Waukegan. The proposed wraparound center will be a valuable community resource and provide Waukegan families much-needed access to services, resources, and other community agencies in a central location in the lower level of the district's new planned central offices at 214 Washington Street. Potential services may include juvenile justice advocates, social-emotional learning support, attorney services, substance abuse counseling, and more. Ultimately, the needs assessment with community input will help decide which services and agencies are most needed to support Waukegan students, families, and community members. Best of all, these services will exist in one centralized location in an administrative building that any of our families, that many of our families already visit. This endeavor is one that has local support and also has support at the state level as well. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity has provided up to $2.5 million for capital improvements to build out the space in the lower level, and the Illinois Criminal Justice, uh, Authority has appropriated funding for an additional cost of $800,000 annually to support operating expenses. These funding sources are partly possible thanks to the support of State Representative Rita Mayfield and State Senator Adrian Johnson. We believe the proposed wraparound center will be a welcome addition to Waukegan's downtown. This wraparound center is a model that is proven to be worthwhile in Peoria under the direction of Peoria Public Schools. If given the opportunity, we are certain Waukegan Public Schools can duplicate that success. The services provided by Waukegan Public Schools Central Office and those provided by the proposed wraparound center should be a welcome addition to our downtown, and we have no doubt that these services can go, coexist with the offices, governmental agencies, and businesses that call downtown Waukegan home. We urge the city council to approve the conditional use permit and parking variance associated with the property at 214 Washington Street and allow Waukegan Public Schools to move one step closer to making the wraparound center a facility. And this letter is signed by several individuals, including, uh, Senator Johnson, Representative Mayfield, Sheriff John Idleberg, Lake County State's Attorney Eric Reinhardt, Lake County Clerk Anthony Vega, Treasurer Holly Kim, Waukegan Township Supervisor Mark Jones, Anton Matthews with Waukegan Main Street and Waukegan Park District Commissioner Matt Machowski, the Chair of the Waukegan Township Democrats, Eugene Roberson and Rick Harris, uh, pastors with, uh, the North Shore Baptist Ministers Alliance, Carlos Herrera, Pastor with Journey Church, Alex Soler, Lead Pastor at Vertical Encounter Church, Georgia Esperanza, Amanda Renaud, and Angel Lopez Rodriguez, all business owners, Isabel Torres, a community advocate, Jesus Ruiz, the Dean at CLC Lakeshore, Aaron Arnold with Waukegan College, Megan McKenna at the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, Dos Ertes with Mono Amo Reno Leedy, Executive Director of Heart of the City, Executive Director, Peggy Talbot, Maggie Morales, um, with, uh, Lake County Foundation, Peggy Talbot with Connect Waukegan, um, and Salushi Ritchie, the new executive, interim Executive Director with Beacon Place.
Thank you, Mr. Alajakis. Speed reading. Okay. With that, that concludes the audience portion, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, we're going to go on to consent agenda. Um, can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda? I need a first. Okay. Alderman Newsome, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Kirkwood. Um, any questions to the motions? Okay. Item A, motion to approve the regular, um, meeting minutes from Monday, March 6, 2023, an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2697, a variance on the minimum lot size requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District. This matter was presented at the Community Development Committee meeting on March 6, 2023. Ordinance approving zoning calendar 2698, a variance on the minimum parking requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District. This matter was presented at the Community Development Meeting on March 6, 2023. Item D, an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2699, a conditional use permit for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District. This matter was presented at the Community Development Committee meeting on March 6, 2023. Item A, a motion to approve vendor payments dated March 20th, 2023, in amount of $553,481.45. Item F, a motion to approve regular payroll dated March 10th, 2023, in a total amount of $1,718, or $718,207, $1,700,000, $718,000, $217.41. Um, item G, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, um, police holiday payback and comp elected officials in civil service final payouts dated March 10th, 2023, in the total amount of $34,250.45. There being no questions to the motions. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports in communication, old business, and I apologize if my voice is cracking. It's been a long night. I'll say that. Um, can I have a motion to hear item A?
I want to pull out item A and B, please.
Okay. Under new.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're doing old business.
Old business.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you. My apologies.
Um, did, do I hear a motion to hear item A? Motion to hear it?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay. That was Alderman Rivera and Alderman Bolton. Okay. This is an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2694, a variance for parking requirement for the proposed school administration building, education services center, wraparound center, and multipurpose training meeting room at 214 West Washington Street, um, in the downtown lakefront overlay district. This matter was referred back to the Community Development Committee meeting on February 21st, 23, and presented on March 20th, 2023. Any questions to the motion? Yes. Alderman Florian.
Mayor, um, there's, there's quite a bit of, um, confusion, I think. You know, we were originally presented that there were going to be no services rendered there, and now there are. Um, we, we had, you know, other confusion about who could get served. You know, I was initially told anybody in Waukegan. Now, tonight, we're told it's only Waukegan School District, which leaves most of my ward out, which is fine if that's the way it is, but, um, and, and I think there's been some valid points made about the timing of this. We have an election coming up in two weeks from tomorrow. Um, the city council, we know, is going to look different. We know that already because of, of what's happened so far with the, the primaries and Alderman Moiseo retiring. We have no idea what's going to happen with the school board, whether it's going to look the same or not. My feeling is, we hold this over until after the election, have the new council and the new school board look at this and make sure that this is what is best for the community going forward, because, just because of the timing of this. My fear is if we vote on it tonight, it's not going to pass, and I think this is something the community really needs. As I said in the committee meeting, I just don't think this is the right location for it. So I'm hoping we can somehow answer some of these questions between now and April 4th and, and revisit this.
So at this point, you want to make a motion to hold this over until the April 17th meeting? Because that would be after the election. April 3rd is our next meeting, and April 4th is the election.
Right. Although the new school board won't be seated, if, if, if there is a new school board, I mean, we don't know, that won't be seated until.
Your Alderman won't be seated until May, uh, May 1st. So do you want to wait until May 1st, then? Or?
Well, I guess what I need to know from the school district is, how does this affect the grant? Like, can, how long can it be held over before you guys are on a time crunch with this?
So thank you for asking that question. So right now, we do have a schedule for construction completion September of 2023 with an occupancy of October 2023. We do have a recurring grant appropriation with ICJA. Um, we do have a date on that document of December 31st, 2023, so it is imperative that we see some services offered this calendar year.
Okay.
So this would push us back. We already had an aggressive, and let me be clear, we already had an aggressive construction schedule for the September, October. This would push us back into potentially the next year, 2024.
So.
Potentially jeopardizing grant because that will not go beyond.
Yeah. Potentially jeopardizing our grant because, again, we have the 2023 date, December 31st, 2023. We need to provide services, not just finish construction, but actually be providing services this year.
Okay. Um, I don't know that. I, I think you, you have to decide, like, whether you want, if you want to hold this over till a date, because this has been going for quite some time and been, I mean, it's fine, but what I'm saying is, like, this could have come before at a sooner date as well, so I don't know that, that can be a factor. But I, I think we need to come to a conclusion at some point in time, whether that be April 17th or whether that be May 1st. Um, if you want to wait for a new Alderman, they will be installed on May 1st, so it would have to be part of the voting after they come in, um, after the installation of them coming in. Um, well.
Yeah, I, I, if I may, um, I don't see the sense in holding it over for the next council, new Alderman. I mean, we were elected to make decisions. This is our term now, current term, so just make the decision. We can hold it over if you want to hold it over, but I'm not in agreement with the idea of holding it over so that somebody else can take the seat.
So is it okay if I say, then, that we'll hold it over to the April 3rd? April 3rd, which would be before the election, but it's April 3rd, and then?
Well, I don't, I think, there's no sense in doing that, I don't think, because that's, there's nothing going to change between now and then.
Okay. Um, what I think it might do is, would that give you time with the business community? Would that?
We're not going to change the time. I have that several.
Okay. Um, okay. So you don't want to hold it over, then?
I mean, if it's gonna.
We don't, we can't have audience speak at this point. Um, so there is a motion before you, then, um, to, we've already discussed it, so now it's just a roll call. Am I correct?
Roll call to hold it over, or roll call to hold.
Is there further discussion? Or yes?
So just, just so I, just to clarify procedurally where we are, we have a motion to approve. There's been a first and a second. Um, the, although the Alderman discussed, Alderman Florian discussed a possible motion to postpone consideration, she did not end up making that motion, and no motion was made, nor was a second made. So we are back to the, the simple motion of whether to approve or deny the variation for parking. Um, you can, if there's further discussion, that's fine, and, or someone can call the vote.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Um, I would just like to say that, uh, a, a lot has been said regarding this topic, um, and, and it can go either way. The services are desperately needed within our community. Um, is it a good fit for this location? Possibly not. So I'm voting no.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes.
Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsome.
Yes, I, um, have some reservations. I did speak with, uh, superintendent and others regarding this, and they are for it. But I also spoke with a lot of the staff, teachers, that have spoken up, and they don't think that it's the right location for this. So I'm torn between, um, approving this and thinking about our children, because I know that they, they are in dire need of some help. Even before COVID, if you hear what's going on over at the schools now, our kids are in trouble, lots of trouble, and it hurts my heart, because my children went through Waukegan High School. I have grandchildren that have gone through Waukegan High School, and it is not the same school that they graduated from, by no means. And I have a grandson there now, and one of the teachers asked me, have he talked to me about how things are at school? He has not, because I believe he likes, you know, Waukegan. But I, I, I'm really torn on this. I, the way it was rolled out, lots of confusion, and this is the first presentation that we've gotten in three, four months. And there's always a, a, a different side or a different this, a different that, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just, my heart is really torn on this, um, on what, and I'm voting based on what I know that our children need, and they need some help. And hopefully, this wraparound center will give them what they need. So my vote would be aye.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Aye.
Yes. Uh, Alderman Turner.
No.
Mayor Taylor.
Um, I, I think at this point in time, I, this is a very difficult decision for me because I've heard pros and cons to this. I do believe, honestly, our children need the help. I, I'm with Alderman Newsome on that. I don't think that this, the way that this has been handled, I don't think it's got the community backing that it needs. And I beg you to get that on board, because you've got businesses here who do not understand what is going on. Um, there's a lot of people who feel that this has been pushed through, and you've heard that tonight. Um, again, um, I will vote for this because I'm looking for you to help our children. But I beg you to reach out to this community, because you certainly haven't done it right now, and it needs to be fixed. Um, so I will back you on this, but I'm expecting change in this city with, with our children. Our children have to come first. They've been through way too much.
No, no, no. Y'all was talking to the children. Y'all was talking to the children.
Um, so, like I said, I, I feel like we need to work with our children and get them where they need to be, but please, don't think that you're done in the school district, because you haven't reached that point yet. Okay? Um, item B.
What, what's your vote?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
You vote, okay. So it's five yeses? Five yeses to four nos. Motion pass.
Item B, an ordinance approving the zoning calendar 2695, a conditional use permit for proposed school, um, administration building, education services center, wraparound center, and multipurpose training meeting room at 214 West Washington Street in the downtown lakefront overlay district. This matter was referred back to the Community Development Committee meeting on, please, it's not audience time. Um, then you need to leave. Um, this matter was referred back to the Community Development Committee meeting on February 21st, 23, and presented on March 20th, 2023. Uh, roll call, please. Well, I need a first and a second. I'm sorry. A first?
A second.
Okay. Who was the first? I missed it. Who made the motion to hear this?
I'm talking to the president.
Okay. Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Bolton. Okay. Um, any questions to the motion? Okay. Uh, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Uh, no.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes.
Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsome.[1785.72] Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye, and again, the same reasoning, I'm going to give you the opportunity to do something with this building and make this the example that the community doesn't believe you can do, so please prove us wrong.
Five yeses and four nos. Passes.
Okay, new business. I'd like to omnibus some of this, but I'd like to pull item A, B, J. J. I. And W, X.
So are we pulling W and X? Okay.
We'll vote on them separately. Okay? So items A, B, C, I, J, W and X, okay? So can I have a motion to omnibus the other remaining items?
Motion.
Okay. Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Starting with item D, a resolution to approve the, a fifth temporary extension of the intergovernment agreement with the CL.
Starting with item C, right?
D.
No, we pulled C.
We're pulling C out too?
Yep. A, B, C, I, J, W, and X were the ones pulled out.
Great, thank you.
So item D, a resolution to approve a fifth temporary extension of an intergovernment agreement with the College of Lake County for the use of Madison Street Mall. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on March 20th, 2023. Item E, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for the change order with IG Commercial for an amount of $14,742. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March 20th, 2023. Item F, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to retroactively approve spending authority per section 2-458I2, bona fide emergency to Campanella and Sons in an amount of $16,425.53. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March 20th, 2023. Item G, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the bid for the lead service line replacement to Joel Kennedy Construction Corporation for a not to exceed amount of $5,352,600. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March 20th, 2023, and much of the money that we are using for this is coming from grants. Item H, resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for a letter of understanding for an agreement between IDOT and the City of Wakegan. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March 20th, 2023. Item K, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for Police Department Workman's Compensation Claim Number 201810080002. This matter was presented before the March 20th Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item L, a resolution of the City of Wakegan, Illinois reallocating 2023 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. This matter was presented before the March 20th, 2023 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item M, a resolution approving the purchase of, on office cubicle furniture for the water billing and licensing divisions of the Finance Department from WeWork LLC. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item N, a resolution approving the purchase of floor repair services from TSR Concrete Coatings. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item O, a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section 2-458I7 Goodway Favor, waiver, I'm sorry, and approving the purchase of a fully equipped Chevrolet Silverado 2500 Command Vehicle from John Jones Auto Corporation for the Fire Department. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item P, a resolution approving the application and acceptance of fire prevention grant from FM Global Foundation. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item Q, a resolution approving and accepting the assistance of firefighters grant through FEMA. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item R, a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section 2458I7, a good way, good faith waiver and authorizing the purchase of firefighter turnout gear from WS Darley and Company. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item S, a resolution waiving competitive bidding per section 2458I3, joint purchasing and approving the purchase of open gov permitting and licensing software solution from Karasoff Technology Corporation. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item T, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving an agreement with Microsystems Inc. for professional services. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item U, a resolution approving a grant application to the Illinois Department of Natural Services Coastal Management Program to procure and distribute rescue equipment amongst lakefront communities. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee meeting. Item V, a resolution approving and accepting the Michigan Trail Trailhead Amenities Grant through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Any questions to any of those motions? Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A.
So for items A and B, Alderman Kirkwood is going to, as is his practice, will be recusing himself for all matters involving liquor licenses.
Item A, an ordinance creating a Class F1 package beer, wine, and gasoline sales liquor license for NARS Venture LLC located at 3411 Delaney Road. This matter was presented at the Community Development Committee meeting on March 6, 2023. Do you want to explain that a little bit, Council?
Oh, Maggie's going to do it.
Yes, this item was heard before the Community Development Committee. There was discussion that, I believe, the, there had been documentation that the facility had been serving, or been selling alcohol while it did not have a license. This location and business did come before you previously requesting a C1 license that was denied as the number of C1 licenses had been capped. They've come back with the F1 license at the Committee Development, Community Development Committee. There was a negative recommendation based on the information provided by staff that there had been continued service of alcohol or sale of alcohol during the interim while they were in the application process.
So if you vote for this right now, you're voting to?
This would be, the ordinance is written as granting a, or creating a new license. So if you want to create a new license, vote aye. If you do not want to create a new F1 license for this location, vote nay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, so we've capped out? We've reached the cap?
For F1 licenses, yes.
Well, okay.
I'm sorry, for C, yes.
Yes. For C1 licenses, yes. Every time you vote on a liquor license here, you are creating a new liquor license. With C1 licenses, there was an ordinance that created kind of a, a more explicit cap that no more licenses should be created. But the way that our liquor license system works, and this is the way that many communities do, is that they only create a license when they're, when an applicant comes in, there are no licenses actually available. The city council has to create a new license of that class to make it available, and so that's why ordinance has come, come before you, even though the liquor commissioner is technically the person who approves and issues the licenses. However, she cannot approve or issue licenses if none are available. That is left to you as the city council is a legislative body to decide.
Gotcha.
Can, can I ask a que, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if this is approved tonight and, and they have sold liquor without a license, is there some kind of consequence for that? Is there, will they just get this license and we're like, okay, we forgive you, or what, what's the, what's the?
We've not been confronted with the idea of a license being created and granted to someone who was in violation before. It's kind of a novel question.
It certainly would probably require us to notify the state that they have been operating without a license.
Which could create a conundrum for us.
They knowingly operated without it because they were told that the license wasn't transferable last year when they tried to renew, when the owner didn't renew their license, the former owner.
Okay, thank you for that.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we approved this license, it would be a new license, C1.
Actually, an F1, an F1. They, they previously came asking for C1, and the council unanimously voted that down.
Are they still selling liquor goods without a license?
They have been selling liquor goods without a license, yes.
I, I don't, I don't know how recently we've actually inspected the premises or determined that.
So no follow-up has been?
Actually, our building commissioner can address that with you because they did go out and check.
Good evening, Council. We were out there actually two weeks ago, and we caught them serving liquor without the license. They immediately removed all the liquor from the refrigerators and from the shelving. We were out there last Friday, actually last week Friday, and they still did not have any liquor available, so they had stopped serving as soon as we went out there. And I didn't notify the state because I questioned seeing a liquor license valid from the state, and they didn't have one from the city, so I called the state themselves and asked them, and they said that they were going to have somebody check, check up on that one.
You, George, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So I think initially, they were under the impression that their liquor license was transferable from the other owner. Liquor licenses are not transferable, so they did not follow the process and they just, even though they were told by our licensing department, they continued to sell.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the motion?
There was actually, the clerk pointed out, there's not actually been a first and a second on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a first to hear it? I need a first and a second to hear the motion. Just to hear it, I need the first and the second.
I have motion to hear it.
Okay, Alderman Rivera, a second. I need a second. Okay, Alderman Seager. Okay, any other questions to the motion? Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Nay.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
No.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Motion fails.
Item B, I need a first and a second.
I'll make the first.
I'll second that.
Alderman Turner and Alderman Rivera were number one and number two. An ordinance creating an F1 package beer, wine, and gasoline sales liquor license for Yamata Corporation located at 1900 Washington Street. This matter was presented at the Community Development Committee meeting on March 6, 2023.
I'm sorry, what was the second on that one, ma'am?
That was Alderman Rivera. Alderman Turner was number one. Got it, thank you. Any questions to this motion?
That was Yumanji.
What did I say it as?
Yuman, Yum.
Yumanji, I didn't say.
Yumanji.
Yumanji.
Yumanji, okay.
Yumanji.
Thank you, thank you.
Yumanji.
Okay.
Yumanji.
Um.
I just want to comment for clarification. This is a beer and wine license only. No hard liquor at all, no small bottles, beer and wine only.
Beer and wine is an F1, C1 is when hard liquor, so this is just for those two. Any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C. I have a first and a second to the motion.
First.
I'll second.
Alderman Florian, second was Alderman Rivera, and that's an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2700, a temporary moratorium on text amendments to zoning ordinance from private parties. This matter was presented at the Community Development Committee on March 20th, '23. Questions to the motion?
I, I got a question. I know we talked about this, can we put a date on this?
We can put any date that you like on it. The goal was really to tie it to the approval of the Unified Development Ordinance, and you'll be hearing about our public meetings about that and the Planning and Zoning Commission, those things that will happen before it comes to council, so you'll know as it's getting close, and we'll be sharing the document with you for review also.
Do they have a guideline or?
So the approval of this through CMAP was a two-year grant where we paid $15,000 for work that CMAP is doing that's worth probably about a quarter million dollars. So they do have a deadline, they have a goal to finish it before the end of the calendar year. We're really targeting September for it to be in front of you, but that depends also on comments, feedback, how much editing has to be done, whether we need to have additional public meetings. So I think it would be cleaner if we just made?
I, I should state, the ordinance that was, that is included in your packet does have a date, and it, and as Noel said, you can, it's actually January 3rd of 2024, which is 288 days. You can set, you can set a shorter, you can set a shorter timeline as well, and if the, if the UDO, if the Unified Development Ordinance is not complete, you can always extend that moratorium based on that fact.
But to answer her question, there is a time.
There, there is a time limit in section 2B of 288 days terminating on 12:01 a.m. January 3rd, 2024.
And you can always come back and ask for an extension if we're not close to it at that point, am I correct?
Sure. I'll be disappointed if we're not close to it at that point.
So is everybody fine with that date?
And again, any constituent that you have that has a text amendment that they feel is really crucial for them, they can certainly bring it to you, and you can request it of us, and we can advance it forward. Entities of the City of Wakegan, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, and the city staff, my department, can still put in requests for text amendments, and most of the text amendments that we do now are from us.
All right.
Any other questions to the motion? Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item I, can I have a first and a second to the motion? Alderman Newsom, I need a second.
I'll make the second.
Alderman Turner.
I just had a question on this one.
Okay, I'll read it first, and then I'll take questions. A resolution authorizing the procurement of squad car equipment and installation services for 15 police vehicles from HAVI Communications Incorporated. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Questions?
Yes, ma'am, and probably more for the chief. Is the equipment that's being installed in the 15 police vehicles, does that include the new flock cameras or license plate reading?
So they will have LPRs on them, yes. So the flocks are the ones that we? So the flocks are the ones that we have on the street, but those will have LPRs.
My man, thank you, sir. All right, call to vote.
Any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item J, can I have a first and a second? Alderman Newsom, I need a second. Alderman Hayes.
And just for the record, let the record reflect that Alderman Florian recused herself from the consideration of this matter in committee and is continuing to recuse herself for consideration on the main council agenda.
Okay. Um, this is a resolution approving a settlement release of all claims for Treasury Department Workman's Compensation Claim Number 210520W031. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Questions to the motion? Anyone had a question? No? Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item W, an ordinance approving the 2324 fiscal year budget of the City of Waukegan. This matter was presented before the March 20th, '23 Finance and Purchasing Committee. Was that, it wasn't held over, right? It was a vote? Okay. Um, any questions to the motion?
I would like to hold it over. Until, um, the 18th, 17th, April 17th meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that, um, the appropriate motion for that would be, since it's more than one meeting, um, it would be a motion to postpone until the April 17th City Council meeting.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question or is it not, do I have to wait till?
The, well, there, we, we have a motion, we'll get a, we'll get a-
I got a second.
And then you can, then you can-
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
To postpone.
Okay. Question?
Um, well, I believe just from conversation that the biggest issue some people have up here is the salary of the city manager. Can we not approve the budget with just leaving the city manager's salary out until a future date and then everything doesn't get held up? Because don't we have a lot of things that are being, going to be held up if the budget isn't approved?
The budget doesn't take effect until May 1st, but I think at this time, it probably isn't the best idea to pull something out that has a vote coming up on it soon.
Okay, okay.
And just for information, I got a couple of other things that I want to address besides the city manager.
Just make sure we're ready to vote on it by April 17th because otherwise you will be affecting staff's pay increases and it will delay other things as well. So as long as we're ready by April 17th, I think we're fine.
I'll be ready.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a first and a, yes.
I just wanted to express a concern, a reference to this. So we have, uh, this will be reflective of the city manager position being approved for 2023 and 2024. And I, I think we need, our constituents, we need to explain the, the consequences of having a change in levels of government and how we operate to our constituents and they need to participate in voting, taking part of this.
Well, this has nothing to do with the budget. I mean, the, the, right now-
Having the city manager.
I mean, you've had a line item for city bu, for city manager for the last two years.
Irreverent, however, we still need to re-echo that.
But you're not voting on this until after you know what the vote will be on the city manager.
Okay.
Because that'll be voted on on April 4th. And our meetings are April 3rd, which you're not voting it on, and so it'll be at the April 17th meeting.
Thank you for clarification.
So I'm going to put that as a motion of first by Alderman Newsom, a second by Alderman Turner to postpone the approval of the budget until April 17th. Roll call, please, on that.
Alderman Rivera.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry, we're voting to postpone.
It's postpone the vote until April 17th.
Oh, okay. I think we would be ready now, so I'll be a no.
Alderman Florian.
I, I agree, this is the, I voted on, this is my fifth budget as an alderman. This is the best budget I've ever seen. We're projecting a surplus. We have all these great things going on. I see no reason to postpone this. I say no.
Alderman Hayes.
This is disrespectful to the department heads who have made themselves available for the last couple of weeks and who worked their tails off for a year to put this budget together, that you couldn't get your act together and ask them questions in the last month, in the last two weeks? It seems to me that everyone has had plenty of opportunities to ask the questions, seek the information that they need. And the fact that we're kicking the can on this and just playing games, like so many other things we're doing up here tonight, is shocking to me. We are a legislative body. We are not, despite how many times we recall this, we are not inept. We are capable of making decisions. A budget was presented to you. Pass it, vote on it, make a decision. Vote no.
What I will clarify is the budget and the salary ordinances are two different things. So the budget gives you the, it, it's a budget, it's the direction. Until you vote the salary ordinances, none of that tells you how it, how to clarify that, you know what I mean? So it's, it will come with the salary ordinance that clarifies the actual line item per se. So, um, but we're up for a vote. Alderman Bolton.
I agree. Alderman Newsom, we should hold this over.
Okay. Alderman Seager.
We're voting on a motion to postpone, not a vote.
Postpone.
We're, we're voting on the postpone?
Yes.
All right, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, hold it over.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes to postpone.
Okay. Um, item X, can I have, um, a first and a second?
First.
I'll first, I'll second.
Okay. Alderman Florian and Alderman Rivera. Yes, and then I'll have counsel explain this.
Okay, so this is kind of the culmination of a lot of back and forth. Previously, there had been legislative actions that were brought before the City Council to put the questions regarding the managerial form of government on the ballot. Those were voted down and there were three questions, um, those were voted down. And then a citizen petition was submitted. It was deemed to be valid. And on April 3rd, there will be a, on the April 3rd ballot, which I think, or, sorry, April 4th, April 4th. But I think you can begin early voting.
You can do that now.
Today, you could, could, did early voting start today? Okay.
It's already going.
Okay, yes. On whether or not to approve the first part of the three-part question, which would be to adopt or not adopt the managerial form of government. If the managerial form of government is adopted, there is a default that the city would, as of 2027, shift to an at-large system where multiple, two aldermen per ward would be elected. Sorry, no, sorry. Six at large. It's been a long night. The City Council had directed me previously, Alderman Mozio, had asked that this ordinance be placed on the agenda, which would guarantee that if and only if the referendum passed, that at the next available election, which will be the March 2023 primary, there would be a subsequent referendum question to preserve the ward system, to keep nine wards and to keep a single alderman from each ward being elected. The way that this ordinance is written is that if this is approved tonight, this would be sent over to the county clerk and in March of 2024, the citizens would have the ability to preserve the current ward system with one alderman per ward. If the referendum that is up on April 4th does not pass, this ordinance, in the way I've drafted it, becomes annulity. It does not, it, it basically repeals itself. And so it doesn't sit out there, it doesn't trigger a referendum. So if you approve this tonight and the referendum passes, it goes on the ballot in, in March of 2024. If you approve it tonight and the referendum does not pass, no more referendums.
So let me explain this further, that right now, when you are voting on April 4th, you are voting for the current al, for the aldermen that get elected, they will have a four-year term until 2027. So this can be fixed from now until '27. I have said from the very beginning that I want nine aldermen. It has never been a thing of let's do six at large and I don't think anybody looks at wanting that. This assures that this will automatically be on the referendum if the city manager passes on April 4th. So it's already in play, we don't have to wait, it's going to be already on that next ballot, or that next election, which will be the general election in 2023. The reason it's today is because you cannot do it more than one year in advance. So that election is March 19th, today is March 20th, it's 364 days before. So this is the soonest we can get it on and that the public knows that. Like I said, I think this is something that all of us up here have talked about. Alderman Mozio wanted it put on as quickly as possible as I did. So this is the soonest that we can put it on because you have to be under that one-year mark. Any questions from up here?
I have a question.
Yes.
I know we talked about not having this question at a primary, so why are we rushing to do it at another primary?
Can't be more, done more than a year.
Um, I mean, you're still-
When there's a primary election in next March, why not later?
Because it was something that we wanted to guarantee the public that we were doing this?
At a primary, you don't have all the electors voting.
No, you don't.
No, you don't, you do not. If you got independents, they don't vote in a primary.
They would be allowed to vote, they could, they, an independent ballot would allow to be polled and would only have this question on it. So.
And your voters-
Some more, some more confusion. Some more confusion, that's why you have the community questioning why we push this and you talk to the residents and they still don't understand. What that one question means on the ballot. I've had residents ask, it is so confusing that they ask the one question, what does that mean? It's not a state statute attached to it that explains exactly what you're doing.
Well, from up here, I know there's a lot of people who ask me personally and as a mayor, I cannot speak about it once it goes to referendum, as most of us should not be. But the reality of it is, you know, it was brought up in council, it would have been so much easier if we would have voted all three and let the, let the voters decide, but we didn't do that. So now I think to assure people that this will not affect them having an individual alderman, um, whether it goes on a primary or a general, the voter turnout isn't a whole lot different for us, so I think it's just best to get it out there and put on the ballot.
It'd be different, that'd be a presidential election, so it'd be different.
But, yeah, the Alderman Newsom's point, you know, is tremendous confusion in the community about this, tremendous, all right? And I'm gonna tell you, now y'all don't like it when I talk straight, but I'm gonna tell you what's straight. There is one individual in particular who is making a concerted effort to disseminate misinformation about this issue. That's our former mayor, Sam Cunningham. He's been going around to the churches, he's been putting out flyers on cars, he's been making videos on Facebook, and he's been continuously and constantly disseminating misinformation. And we sit, and I, I have tried to clarify that. And the mayor has done it, and other aldermen have done it. And we sit here again tonight trying to clarify and, and clear up this misinformation that has been purposefully disseminated to mislead, manipulate, and exploit the voters. That is what's causing the confusion. You can't be any more clear than we have been here. You've had this, you've had this, the corporate council explain it numerous times, you've had the mayor explain it numerous times. I, I've explained it numerous times. Last week, I hosted a town hall, that's all we did was talk about clarification and clearing up this issue. I was gonna do another town hall tomorrow evening and I said, I want to have the two sides, we'll have someone from, from Waukegan Forward on the, on the pro side and we'll have, is anybody in all of Waukegan interested in coming and speaking against, against it, presenting the con of it? No one. Not one person would step up to say why we should not do it. And then we sit here again with confusion. So, yeah, I'm sorry, I'll get off my soapbox, but it, it just frustrates me because all we have to do is be straight with our people.
What I will say is I, I don't know who's putting information out, but I know-
I didn't say it.
Many of you have received flyers that don't have a paid for, I mean, they were distributed through churches, through, even at City Council. That do not have who they, the flyer is paid for by.
Standard tactic.
If it does not have who it's paid for by, that organization doesn't exist. That's somebody putting that out individually. What I will say, there's been confusion between whether it's the Waukegan Township Democrats putting stuff out or the Waukegan Democratic Organization. I personally don't know who the Waukegan Democratic Organization is-
Same difference.
Since they don't have a state, um, registration. So I don't know everything that has been dispensed, but what I will say is we've been perfectly clear here, we've started last year talking about having a city administrator. I think Alderman Hayes put it best was, let's try this on for size before we make the commitment. We didn't do it.
Right.
Now, let's talk about let's getting these aldermen so that everybody is assured that you're gonna have an alderman, one per ward. I don't care about everything else that's happened, let's make sure that we're getting our aldermen into place. I've said this many times, as one of nine aldermen that represented this city, I believe that each ward needs representation, I believe that's important, and I believe they all need to be equally heard. And that is the purpose of this, is bringing this forward and assuring the public that that's what is wanted here, is I, I don't, I don't know that I've heard anybody say that we don't want nine aldermen. So-
No, we have, Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
So, um, this, this item on the agenda will put this on the ballot in a year, a year from now. So if the city manager passes on April 4th, then we have an entire year, well, minus a month or so, to educate people, you need to vote on March, whatever date you said, 20, 21st, 19th, 19th, sorry, March 19th, and you need to vote to keep your aldermen and your wards. We have an entire year, we can say it every city council meeting, we can say it every time we talk to a, a constituent. As my husband said to me when we were discussing this, anyone who votes against this tonight is not only voting against their, their residents having their, their representation, but they're voting against themselves. Because if we only have six aldermen elected citywide, who knows who's gonna get elected? So I, I see, this is a no-brainer in my opinion. We need to pass this and go home, it's 10, 10:15.
Yep. Oh, wow.
I'd like to, uh, hold it till April 17th, till after the election, so we will know exactly what we're doing.
So-
Because the alderman, the alderman voted not to push this forward, you wanted the alderman to put all three questions on the ballot, to secure this, now you want the alderman to come back and fix it. When you had your Waukegan Forward group go out there, they had an opportunity. When you had your Walk Keegan Forward group go out there, they had an opportunity to put all three questions on the ballot, and they chose not to do that because they said the same thing that the aldermen said. I didn't have enough time, and it was too confusing. I heard that firsthand. That's why they then put all three questions. Now they want the aldermen to fix it, because by default, if it passes, you automatically go to six aldermen, voted at large. So you want the aldermen to come and fix it, so that you can keep one alderman per ward, nine wards. When you should have put all three on there, if that's what you wanted to do, now you want the aldermen to bail you out. When the aldermen thought it was too rushed, where we couldn't explain it to our community, to give us two years, now you're talking about a year. You okay with that? But you weren't okay for us to ask for more time before, to let the community know exactly what we're voting on.
And I'd like to validate that also, because when you vote city at large, you automatically are supposed to lose your aldermen. So yes, this is trying to fix something that's not even broke.
So there's a motion to postpone, holding, you can only hold over by, you can only hold over by a single alderman's motion for one meeting? So Alderman, Alderman Newsom, you'd like to hold this over, you'd like to postpone this until the 17th?
Yes.
Okay, that requires a vote of the majority of the city council. So you can, you need a first and second, and then a-
I second it.
So we have a first and second to hold until April 17th, and so what are you telling me, we need a-
You need a roll call vote on that motion.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
This is to postponed for two meetings.
I'm sorry, this is two?
Postpone consideration of this for two meetings.
Until April 17th.
No, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes.
Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
No.
Okay, so we are back to the original motion, which is for, to consider the ordinance to place the referendum question on the ballot for the March 19th, 2024 election.
And you need a motion?
I believe we have a motion, do we-
Florian and Rivera.
We already have a motion on the floor, so you can have further discussion of this, or you can call the vote.
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
Call the vote. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Alderman Rivera.
And this is for?
This is to, this, we're back to the base motion of approving the ordinance to place the referendum question. Shall, if the city of Walk Keegan adopts a managerial form of government, shall it retain the ward system with a single alderman being elected from each ward?
Yes.
For the March meeting, for the March.
March 19th, 2024 primary election.
Okay. All ready? Alderman Rivera.
Yes.
Alderman Florian.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
No.
Alderman Kirkwood.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye. Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Thank you, there being no ordinances, closing time, alderman time.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I will make this brief because it is past 10 o'clock. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the well wishes that I have received in the last four weeks. I missed two meetings due to a small accident where I fractured some ribs and dislocated my shoulder. I'm doing a lot better, as you can see, I'm here. But again, thank you very much, very heartwarming. I want to thank everyone who attended this meeting today, this was, and who participated in audience time, it was great interaction with everyone. The topics were definitely very interesting and very, very key to the success of our community. And one thing I want to do is also give my condolences to all the families who have lost a loved one in the last month. Thank you all for staying past 10 o'clock. God bless you, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Rivera, I wish you continued recovery from your injuries. Thank you to everyone who came tonight, and have a safe ride home.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So regarding item X that we just voted on, if anybody's confused about what that is, you can call me. I've had numerous phone calls, I mean, we have a year, let's be realistic, I'm sure that people can be educated. First and second ward people, you already called me for clarification on city manager, if you need clarification on this, you can call me, I'm happy to talk to you, I will take your calls as I've been doing recently. There is no reason that we cannot explain what this means to people over the course of the next year. We heard from numerous members of our business community today that they were against the wraparound center. It seems to me that if we want to attract new businesses-
We don't.
-to downtown Walk Keegan, the first step is to support the businesses that are currently there. It's not an easy place to do business, you don't have to be from Walk Keegan to know that. Many of the individuals that came and spoke today, they've been grinding it out, they've been making a living, they've been keeping their doors open, they've been good neighbors, they've been doing everything they can to keep their doors open. And they came, they spoke in opposition, they went door to door, they did everything they're supposed to do as engaged members of our community, and they asked, they asked all of us to vote against it, and we didn't come through for them. We didn't come through for the very people who are still keeping downtown Walk Keegan up and running. And that, that is such an unbelievable shame to me. That is such an unbelievable shame to me.
Yeah.
What is more shocking to me is that the go-to, the default of this city council is, I don't understand, it's not clear, it's been rolled out too fast, I'm hearing from people in my ward that they don't get it. In my two years, I have heard this so many times. Tonight, everything that you've said and spouted off for the last two years about what you don't understand and what your constituents don't understand, came back to bite you because you voted on something that you didn't understand. No one has a clue what is going into this wraparound center. There were 10 people here from District 60, they didn't know, they were contradicting each other. I started writing them down, I ran out of space. They have no idea what they're putting in that wraparound center. They have no idea if it's gonna benefit the city or if it's not gonna benefit the city. We have been taking steps forward, tonight we took a step back. I'm disappointed in that, and I feel like we should have done a better job of supporting our community members and the businesses downtown. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I thank you all for presenting the wraparound program, working in social services. I know desperately how these services are needed. I know it's a controversial issue, far as location, but be mindful, if we want to make a change, we need to address those in need. And in reference to changing our system of government, please be aware that it greatly disenfranchised people of color, and it doesn't bring diversity, and we definitely want everyone to be included. So I think it's really important that we explain the consequences around having the change of government, and I'm glad we postponed this. Thank you for everyone calling me and reaching out to me and having questions and concerns, that's all I have.
Alderman Turner is looking for somebody to debate Walk Keegan Forward on the city manager, and take a position in opposition.
Alderman Seager.
I would, hold on, hold on. I would emphasize that right now, tonight's, tonight's item was strictly about putting a new referendum on. Debating the city manager referendum on the floor, either pro or against, is an improper thing to be doing at this time. You can do it when you're out in your wards, I don't mean to be didactic, but that is something that, you guys are all acting as elected officials, whether you're for it or you're against it, this is not the time to actually debate that.
Yeah. Well, just for clarification, I'm not offering to debate it, I'm offering to provide a venue for two or more individuals to debate. I'm taking a neutral position on it.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure that this didn't turn into a debate right here about whether we should or should not have a city manager. This is, I just wanted to caution that for everybody.
Alderman Seager.
I like that. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say, it's been a trying evening, and I thank everybody for being with us tonight. God bless you, stay safe, and our whole council bless you all. Good night.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Once again, I think that there are some tough issues that we're facing. I think that it's important that our constituents have a clear understanding, I would hope that certainly, most people don't come out and vote in the primaries, usually they vote in the general, but once again, you know, the majority rules, and we have to accept that and move on. In terms of the information regarding our cleanup, we will get that information to you from the fourth ward, and once again, I would encourage everyone to get out and vote their conscience, thanks.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce the Earth Day cleanup for the fifth ward is going to be Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and the location for the fifth ward is 1502 Grand Avenue. That address again is 1502 Grand Avenue, that's Wednesday, April 19th, for the fifth ward. And the building code, I'd like to thank you all for taking care of some abandoned vehicles I had in the fifth ward, and debris that I had been waiting for a couple months, that was around a dumpster that needed to be removed, so I appreciate taking care of that, and Public Works. Potholes, I've seen that you've been out taking care of potholes since we've gotten rid of the snow, so I appreciate that. And also, the situation today with having the sewer line checked for a resident that was getting backup, and it's something when you get backup and there's no rain, you know, and the sewer lines are not overflowing, so I appreciate you getting out there to make sure there was no clogs or backups in there, so I appreciate it, and so does the resident. So I want to thank you both for that, that's all I have.
Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I got a lot, I'll try to be quick, though. First, I want to say something about Women's History Month, and I normally wouldn't speak to this, but as, I was sitting here thinking about it, you know, when I grew up in the 50s, I was born 12 years after the end of World War II, there weren't a lot of women in professional, in the professional workforce. You know, I had a lot of domestic stuff, cooks and cleaning ladies and nurses and things like that, but, you know, over these many decades, and I find, and I'm just, it's an amazing accomplishment and transition for our society because we have women in all walks of life, in leadership roles, and I often find myself, in my capacity as a consulting project manager, reporting to women, and even now, with my current client, I report to three different women, and then a bunch of other people too, but anyway. So I was looking around here, and the room was crowded, right, and I was just looking at all these women in leadership, not just here on the council, because we do, we have a lot of women, we have the clerk, the mayor, aldermen, but also out in the audience, and we have two female police officers out there, Officer Sanchez and Officer Hindi, we got Noel Kishir Lepa, who's been in leadership, Director Garland, we've got Diane Verratti, Wygina Brisk, Jane Ferry, just, you know, a lot of women playing a very significant role in all walks of our society, and I think we are tremendously blessed to have such a variety of leadership and perspective, so. Alright, that's enough of the teary eyes. April 19th, we'll have our dumpster up in the sixth ward in the 1700 block of Walnut, I think that's gonna be from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m., but it's underneath the power lines, and I'll be out there again as usual. Wanted to make mention of the license plate scanners that are going in the police cars, I asked about that because it's a very powerful tool. Right now, we have one traffic officer, and if he's behind you, he's running your license plate, right, but he does it manually. Now we're gonna have 15 automatic readers, and the reason this is important is because a lot of guns are taken off the streets through traffic stops, as well as the number of stolen cars that are recovered, people who are driving on revoked or suspended licenses, etc. So it's a really powerful tool, this automated system, if the police behind you with this camera, they're gonna run your, it runs your plate like that, right? So I expect that there's gonna be a lot more gun seizures because of these cameras, I'm really excited about it. Alright, so here's the hard news, a year ago, this meeting, right, the first meeting in March of 2022, this council unanimously and enthusiastically passed a resolution that we would honor the 88th birthday of Alderman Larry Tempest by making an honorary street designation for Hickory Street between Glen Flora and Greenwood. While that was unanimous voted of the council, it didn't happen. And so what did happen is I went and I paid a permit fee or whatever, and $300, and I paid to have a sign put up, and I created a sign, and I had a sign created, which I presented to Alderman Tempest, and I created a resolution from me, from his alderman, to my alderman, right? And you should have seen the smile on his face. The reason I mention this is, Mr. Tempest served, again, 43 years on this council, and we did pass a resolution, I would like that resolution to be carried forth, I would like it to be implemented as we voted on it a year ago. I want the street renamed, every intersection between Glen Flora and Greenwood, honorary street name for Alderman Tempest. And I'd like to have that done before his 89th birthday on April 28th of this year. The next one is trivial citations, right? So I got several calls again in the last couple, three weeks, with one in particular yesterday, related to the trivial citation. I say trivial, I understand that these citations or notices of violation are related to ordinances that are on the books, I've had this conversation with the building commissioner and the code supervisor several times, but I have to continue to mention it because people continue to mention it to me, and it's not just people in the sixth ward, I'm getting calls from all over town complaining about things such as being cited or receiving letters about peeling paint around their windows, they got decorative lighting outside, they didn't paint their porch, they didn't paint the banister, or they have two steps up to the door and they want, they're being told that they need a railing or something. And the frustration is that while those notices of violations are being issued and sometimes citations are being issued, those citations and fines are burdensome on many of our residents. I had a call today from a guy who, first things, hey man, I lost my job, you know, and I got this letter. So I think we need to take a look at, and the other thing to mention is not consistent enforcement. And then while we're looking at these trivial citations, trivial violations, other things are not being addressed, like Mr. Shinjin talked about, the abandoned church up there on Greenwood, we got the 809 North County property, we have, I drive around and I see tires behind the garages, I drive through alleys and there's illegal dumping, there's all kinds of issues that should be more of a priority and should be focused upon- There's all kinds of issues that should be more of a priority and should be focused upon that are not. Instead, we're focusing on penalizing our residents, our taxpayers, for trivial violations. And I think that needs to be reevaluated. This program, calling it curb appeal, right? But if you think about it, the city of Walk Keegan doesn't maintain its own curbs. You drive around the city, you don't see the yellow curbs painted. You don't see the traffic control lines painted. You don't see the crosswalks painted. You don't see the fire hydrant. The fire hydrants are a frickin' disaster. They don't get painted, right? But then you yell at somebody because they didn't paint their porch. They didn't paint their porch. But we're not maintaining our own areas of responsibility. So I think we really need to reevaluate this curb appeal program and focus our priorities on things that are important and impactful to how we all live and how Walk Keegan is perceived. Thank you. Good night.
Well, I just want to address a little bit of that. Is that we do have, we hire youths to do our fire hydrants and stuff. And we started them last year, and we will continue to do them. Most of them have not been painted in years. And so we're back doing those. Obviously, we can't paint all the fire hydrants at once, but we are working on things. By all means, talk to our building commissioner. Like I said, we're, there's a lot of issues, and some are actually going into a housing court that we, are bigger issues than we can handle. With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you're all yelling at once. Who was number two? I need a second. I got Alderman Florian. Who's my second? Alderman Hayes. All those in favor? Good night, everyone.
I'm not in favor. I want to stay. Where are you guys?